I called the whole of the city council meeting about October eighth, twenty twenty four to order at seven PM. Please call the roll.
All right, uh, Council Gilson.
Here.
Council LaCoste. Council Isom.
Here.
Mayor Lockenbrough.
Here.
Council Flores.
Here.
Council Strauss.
Here.
Council Romer.
Here.
Please write for the Bloods and Legions.
Bloods and Legions to the flag, the United States of America, in its true republic for which it stands, our nation, under God, into this law of liberty and justice for all.
Want to thank each of you who took time to attend tonight. Any guests who are physically present need to fill out the meeting signing sheet near the door. And we're running a hybrid meeting again tonight to continue to allow those who wish to attend remotely to do so. To cut down background noise and feedback, remote attendees should mute themselves while not speaking. Staff members and guests on the agenda will need to unmute themselves to give reports to council. Audience members may unmute themselves to speak current citizen comments. First on the agenda is approved council minutes for September tenth, twenty twenty four.
I move the governing body of City Halsey approve the September tenth city council minutes that is submitted.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post. Next on the agenda, the financial report for August twenty twenty four and September twenty twenty four, providing the fact that financial reports must be voted on separately or there are any questions for discussion. And in a ten rotation for August.
I moved that the governing body of the City of Halsey approved the Au- August something or other. Thank you, twenty twenty four, uh, council minutes as submitted.
Financials, sorry.
Yes.
We have a second?
I can't multitask.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Next is the motion for September financial reports. End of the motion.
I'm not going there. I moved that the governing body of the City of Halsey approved the September twenty twenty four financial reports and journal entries as submitted.
Second.
Thank you. Let's move on.
Second, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Do you have any agenda adjustments for this evening?
No agenda adjustments. I just want to know if they need a quality library report, if amount of items was looked at, or the numbers. So that was a super carryover.
Next item on the agenda is delegations and the Sheriff's Department here. Do you see members of the Order Department of Motor Vehicles?
Our presentation, photos, but, um, I'm gonna start off with, oh, my council, I'm Andrea Mather, I'm the Assistant Resident Engineer in the Rouse Office for ODOT, and I am the one managing the construction project here in town. So hopefully, this will be my last time here, uh, that we're gonna finish it up real soon, so kind of our final farewell, and looking at some before and after, and kind of, you know, where we were and how we got here, um, and yeah, so let's look at first photo. So yeah, this is just a construction photo, um, we're gonna go through a construction recap, look at the before and after, and then I'll explain the remaining work that'll be done, um, here in the fall. So, construction recap, we started this project in construction in August of twenty twenty two. So, a little over two years ago, we started, we broke ground, started with all the pipes in town, um, and then we, we went through, we started on the north end, we rebuilt all that on the twenty three, then we went down the second half, um, mostly this year. Um, yeah, it's been, it's been a wild ride at times, but, uh, it's, it's good, so, uh, if you can go back one, sorry, I'm gonna go through these quantities, so exclamation. Seventeen thousand cubic yards we've excavated here, so that's all the old road bed, that's all the material that we have removed from the site, some of it we reused, but most of it has left, so that, that's a lot of material. Um, curbs, we've installed almost ten thousand feet of curbs in town, that's both, you know, both sides of town, all the way down on all those side streets, uh, ten thousand feet of curve. Sidewalks, forty thousand square feet of sidewalks, so again, we did new sidewalks all through town, we didn't, you know, no sidewalk was left, and uh, forty thousand, that's a, that's a, that's a lot of flat work, um, and I think it looks pretty good, I'm very, I'm very happy with how that all turned out. Aggregate base, uh, there's a typo on that, it's only supposed to be seventeen thousand, I'm sorry, seventeen thousand tons, I don't know, that'd be a lot, it's seventeen thousand, almost eighteen thousand tons. Uh, and that's all what we used to build the road up, um, so as you remember those concrete panels, um, were here before, so when we removed all those, we used the aggregate base to build the road back up before the asphalt. Uh, and the paving, almost fifteen thousand tons of asphalt were installed, um. That's a lot, that's a lot, um, so, taking a long time, but there were big numbers that, um, we had to get built, so let's look at some before and after photos. So here's a before shot, this is down, um, kind of by the railroad tracks, looking north through town, um, that was taken, they, I think right when we were starting the pipe work. Um, so yeah, that's, that's, that's the before shot, and then if you go to the after, that's what it looks like today, so I took, took that this morning or this afternoon. Um, the exciting thing is striping is gonna get installed, so you see all those little marks on the road today, so tomorrow they're gonna come in and fill those with striping, and so that's really gonna pop, uh, with all the new striping. But you can just see all those new sidewalks, all the new trees, um, and just all the changes, the upgrade looks, and you can see the new buildings down there, um, so yeah, so if you go to the next one, I'm gonna look at some intersections, some before afters, this is American, right here, um, we had all those overhead, uh, flashing lights that were kind of distracting when you came into town, um, so we replaced those, put the new flashing lights on the stop signs, and then redid all the ADA ramps at the intersection. Uh, and then this is D Street, um, so this was, uh, looking north at D Street, you could see before, no sidewalks, where the sidewalks were, you know, really far down and really narrow, um, to now that they're at road height, and you can see all the striping, so, yeah, and then we go to F Street, so F Street, there was no sidewalks on F Street, um, those concrete panels is where that started, uh, and we've changed now to all asphalt, and there's really nice sidewalks on both sides of the street. Uh, G Street, this is looking south, um, kind of at a fire station. So you see again the going from the concrete that was very loud, very bumpy, uh, and also had a lot of utility cuts in it, so you see down the center of the road, there was, and maybe we built up, I think there was some, I think there was some beforehand. Um, but we also put in more when we did the pipe work, um, but yeah, and go to the smooth asphalt that we have, and then the railroad crossing. So, yeah, the railroad crossing, I, I will happily admit that I did get misty eyed when I was standing down there last week and it all got done, I, I the mountains have moved to get that done.
Here's.
By, by a lot of people, and to have it actually be actualized and done, and, um, it's smooth, it's nice, so, yeah. Uh, so that's, that's kind of the before and after, um, I'm happy to share photos, I'll take more when we get done with striping where it's actually done, so if you guys want some before and after shots, uh, to see the changes, um. So main work, so striping, like I said, that'll get done this week, uh, some final planting, so we're not done with planting, the trees are in, some of the trees, you may still move a couple for some signs and stuff, so you may still see some trees. Um, but some final planting, the bark dust, kind of cleaning it up, and then, and then just general cleanup of the site, so, um, they need to go and, and clean some stuff up. There are also some like sidewalk repairs, some concrete cracks that will fix, so you'll see, you'll see them kind of working on that kind of stuff over the next month-ish, um, but you'll really start seeing a decline in our presence here in town, so, yeah, and then the contract completion date is in December, so they have to be done by about the first week of December. Um, but what does it look like once we're done? So when we leave, we have two big things that are gonna happen, so we have a one-year plant establishment period, so that means my contractor has to maintain the trees in town for one year after they're planted, to make sure that they establish and that they live, so that includes watering, um, pruning, um, and just general maintenance of the trees. There will also be, ODOT will come out and look at the trees, uh, it's about four or five times through that year period, and we will know if there's any problems. I've already talked, um, around about this, that I'm gonna hopefully remember to coordinate and make sure that if she sees something, she can tell me and I can include it in reports. Uh, so that's the first year for the trees, and then the right-of-way transfer, so a big part of this project is giving you guys the sidewalks, uh, so that process has started. Uh, it's a long process, so you will see surveyors here in town going the entire length of town, surveying everything, uh, along the highway, and we will have to write the descriptions, and it's, it's a process, so it could take up to two years for that to all go through that process, um, but I'll stay on it, um, and you know, we, we have a CIGA, um, but that's, that's kind of a long-term thing, it just takes a long time, so, um. That's what the post-construction Halsey will look like, it'll be yours, uh, and then, yeah, this is, this was taken in, I think, July, I think. Um, and you'll see all the sidewalks are done, and I think you're painting down idle park in this photo. So we got some nice aerials during the site, but we also have a lot of drone videos and drone, um, photos of this, of the project, so. Mainly, I just want to say thank you, thank you for all your, you guys' support as council, um, it's been felt to you as a community, it's been delightful to work in, um, I've worked in a lot of towns, and this has been by far the best. So your support here, your support out in, on-site has been, and your patience, your patience has been commendable, it's been a long project, um, but, and, you know, we've, we've had our ups and downs and our moments of maybe despair, but, uh, we've gotten through them, and I'm, I'm really proud of the work, and I'm really proud of town that you guys get to live in, so, yeah.
I want to say thank you, I don't recall the very beginning when we were doing the draw-up science of there being that connection between basketball court and sidewalks.
Yeah.
I noticed that that's in, I think that's an awesome addition, thank you for that.
You're welcome, I don't know, it, I mean, it wasn't good, but it's in, it's in, I, yeah, I didn't come up with that, but, um, yeah.
So don't remember the initial draw-up, that being there.
Yeah, no, I, I looked at that today, and I was just so happy that that all, that all worked, and it's all gonna, it's gonna work really well if you guys have some part plan, I just, it, it's gonna look so, so nice, and just, you can now, you walk from the school to the park.
Exactly.
On sidewalks.
Yes.
The whole way, the whole way, so it's really great.
Kind of reminded me of the Colorado River, the sidewalk just kind of disappears.
For a lot, we would dig something that rock, yeah, it really is, this was here, so, yeah, but.
I have to say two different things that, um, make me teary-eyed too, but just driving through town the last few weeks and seeing people walk on the sidewalk. So it makes me teary after living here, because I've seen people out walking on the sidewalks, and then to be able to drive down the road and see the trees too. It's like, finally we can, not that we didn't before, but finally take pride in our community. It does.
Trees came in at, like, home, it really did, I was really shocked how, how much the trees changed things.
Yeah.
So I think with the striping tomorrow, it's gonna, you're gonna have that feeling all over again, it's gonna be really great, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else have any questions?
Yeah, um, I just want to comment, um. Few years ago, I was talking to a, a business person from Junction City, and I asked him from their professional opinion, what what put them, what put them off about Halsey, and his wife decided to be standing there before he could even answer, she said, oh, that road just jars your teeth when you go through Halsey, so it's nice that now, instead of thinking of the, I don't know.
We were in the pumping Rose Town.
Bumps.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, now we have a, a, a road that we can be.
It reflects your town a lot better, too.
Yeah.
It really does, it reflects who you guys are. You guys have a lot of pride in your town, and now the highway shows that, so it's, it's really nice, and it's been, it's been great working your town for two years, so.
I do have a question.
Yes, of course.
Could we have our distracting lights back?
Mm-hmm.
Or streetlights?
No.
No.
Stoplight.
The intersection.
Came up at other meetings, and I think pretty much it was a consensus, council, we'd like to have those back.
One above?
Yes.
Well.
That was my, I, that was another thing I was gonna bring up, too, that, that people run the, these stoplight signs all the time.
No, this is really helpful, do you see the one side of the intersection more than the other? Do you see this one worse than the other three?
I would say coming this direction into town.
Yeah.
Also surprisingly, which to me feels more urgent, coming from town out.
Okay.
I don't see it as much coming up to twenty eight.
Becoming.
Yeah.
People don't do it over there.
Coming from the north going south, it is a little hard to see signs until you're like.
I'm gonna try to move that sign in.
Good.
Um, so that's what I was asking, 'cause we've had some other complaints, um, so I, I'm gonna do it. Yeah. Okay, but if there's, if there's another one, I'll look at this, I'll look at both these, if we move one, I wanna make sure they're in the right spot for all, so.
I think that would be helpful, okay, see if it makes an impact, um, okay, and certainly we have historical reports that we could do it to, right, for stops related to.
We guess we had some, um, crash-related issues at an intersection, I think.
If that's helpful for ODOT.
French doctor, have been more.
Yeah.
It's just gonna be way worse.
It was.
When I first moved here thirty years ago, people were blown by that all the time.
Well, I will.
I'll just translate it, you know, I can't see as good as.
I'll ask around and see if there's anything else we can do, um, I can think of a couple things, but I don't wanna like give you false hope.
Sure.
Um, but we can see if maybe uh, we'll see, I, I, I'll ask, I'll ask a question if we can do different mitigations.
Well, it used to be when we had the other lights, you could, I mean, since you came across the overpass, you could see the lights in Halsey, there's a stoplight, now you can be basically past the high school before you even realize there's a stop sign up there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, I will, I will ask our traffic division if there is something else we can do to increase awareness of the stop signs, there are a lot of skid marks. I was listening out when I was taking photos yesterday, there were a lot of skid marks in America, so I was, they're not being less. You know, they're not like, oh, they're, they're getting used to the new traffic, now they're, they're growing, so I will, I will ask.
Are the new crosswalks, like the flashing crosswalks, those functional yet, or are they still?
Working on, so that's probably gonna be one of the last things that happens, there was some, um, uh, errors in some things that we're fixing, so, uh, we'll get those fixed, and I hope in months-ish, we'll get them working, but, uh, we had to rewire some things, so you'll see some electrician that you're requiring. And that's what the street lights do, there was some errors. That were fixed.
Crosswalks are huge.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And they're used, and people are using them, so, um, yeah, I'm really, again, it's, it's amazing, I've seen, just my two years here, I've noticed a difference in people walking around.
Right.
So, I've yet to see a bicyclist.
I've seen her teaching the child to ride a bicycle.
Okay.
On sidewalk.
Okay, I want, I wanna see a bicycles in the bike lanes, that'd be cool.
That'd be good.
Yeah, before, before I really, you know, I want, I wanna see a bicycle in the bike.
You don't need two hands to do that.
Yeah, you can do it, I can see you do it.
Yeah.
You're on your Lord Mayor hat, right?
Oh, wait, that, he can't do that, he can't do that, yeah.
Um, just for the benefit of council, we have Andrea here, uh, we've already had a discussion about, not a very large, like, bunch of items, and um, to be clear, there are some things that are agreements that the city has with Wildish, so some of those bunch of items, it went to ODOT, yeah, too. Wildish, because some things go into that bucket, so we've discussed these buckets, but not a huge amount of things, it's just the fact that Wildish has been working on this project for two years, and obviously they've taken up space on our side streets, so there's a little bit of impact there, or some things around that. Um, we have one house in our community left, that I think there's some landscaping issues that need to be addressed, so those things are all, two, okay.
Yes.
Yeah, so like very minimal, especially considering the kinds of grade changes that we have, um, and so we're in communication, it's on the record, so over the next month, I guess we can just basically most things addressed, and again, we need to keep in mind, there's a couple of things that are, are agreements with Wildish, and so we'll have to go that route to make sure that those things.
I have full faith that they will, um, uh.
So we want to hear.
Yeah, I, that they will honor their agreements with the city, they are a good contractor, they're a local, they will, I have, I doubt they will have any agreements.
Much.
We have questions, okay, well, you guys have my contact information, if anything else comes up, if you see something, tell me soon. So that's why I'm most leveraged now with the contractor to get things fixed right now, so, yeah, a year from now I won't, but if it's seasoned then, say.
Will do, thank you.
Thank you for your dedication.
Uh, next up is the Lit Young Church. Ready?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
I'm gonna go quick. Uh, that, um, we've seen in previous reports, um, over time, uh, the only that we had last month was batteries and whatnot being stolen from various trailers parked throughout the city owned by Diamond K, um, they're not super secure, and there's no video surveillance that watches them, they report stolen stuff to us, but there's not a lot we can do about it, um, they're kind of all over the city in various locations, um, and so it's really a part for us to combat that and investigate that. Um, but that, that happened multiple times, uh, higher, on average, I would say, a higher than average citations issued last month, the two arrests made were related to warrants. And the one crash we made is 'cause someone decided to do a U-turn in the construction.
I saw that right after, and I'm like, what the heck happened?
Yeah, so you'll see when it says, uh, FSTs, that they did FSTs, that means they did field sobriety tests, which means we asked them to step out of vehicle to make sure they weren't impaired for some reason. Um, U-turn laws in Oregon, there's a couple of caveats to do it, but you can do a U-turn in Oregon, as long as it's not within a control distance. It was a, it was a legal U-turn, um, but they suffered the, the consequences of the, of police, so.
Other than that, um, kind of as typical, not a lot to talk about, you'll see the cougar call on there, but we didn't have one that last time.
But, uh, thought I'd bring that up ahead of time. Question, yeah.
Can you tell me anything about the, um, one on the twenty first, the juvenile complaint? On Fifth and, um, F, I happened to be outside, I live on C Street, I happened to be outside and heard all the sirens and watched the cops fly through that, the stop sign there. And then they were surrounded, there were four of them, surrounded the house right there, it just says juvenile complaint though, but they were there for quite a while too. And I was just concerned, I mean, I understand that they were in pursuit or whatever, but it was alarming how fast they went going down Fifth and blew through that stop sign. Do you remember that day? Yeah, Tony and I were both, we were like, what the heck just happened?
Long time since I seen you go that.
Right, in town.
Did you know the plan on page six of September?
Yes, very top one.
That I see on the top of page one versus case number.
Yeah.
Versus casualty, which means that was a very big event.
Okay.
What it was, if there was a case number associated with it, it would, there'd be a few numbers there, but those case numbers are when, like, felonies or misdemeanors happen, and they need to be routed to certain courts or attorneys or insurance companies.
Yeah.
When you see CAD, it means it was just minor, it doesn't need to go anywhere, we didn't add a couple notes and sentences in there.
Yeah.
So I'm curious if that's where it was even before, 'cause usually if we turn our lights on and we're running, we would.
And there were four of them, and my husband and I went, yeah, we were being sneaky, trying to figure out what the heck just happened, 'cause as fast as they were coming into town, and then there were four of them parked you know, at the intersection, like, facing the house right there, so I was just curious, but also just wanted to make the comment about how fast they were going.
Yeah.
Alarming. It was right about, it was at eleven, right, it was before noon, you know that.
Um, and then tomorrow, I'll look into it, and I'll just send an email, which can be forwarded on to council about what it was, and.
Okay, whatever you can, if you can't tell, that's fine.
I can tell you, I can tell you, because there's not a report number associated with it, which means it's all public record, if there's a case number, there's an arrest made, I can't comment on too much stuff.
Yeah.
But I can tell you, just by seeing a CAD, I know that it wasn't a big deal.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I'll get you any answer tomorrow.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So with the highway is pretty close to being finished. Do you, have you seen or expect to see more high, higher speeds?
I would expect to see speeds with that smooth that the road is. Uh, there's, there's so many parts of traffic enforcement, number one, um, where I'll, I'll dive into this a little bit, the way we have to position our vehicles, I'll tell everybody. To hit a radar speed, uh, we can only register them front and back, radar and direction.
Right.
It's only, it only reaches the, directly in front of my car, directly in the back.
Right.
So it's hard for us to kind of monitor that, we like to sit at the fire station entrance or driveway there and monitor speed that way. But I think if we were to go through like years worth of reports for Halsey, and I know that like speed has never been like a top five thing for, for Halsey, it's typically like stop signs and equipment and moving violations, you know, uh, it's just something we have to monitor, and when we, when we see this start to happen, we try to hit it hard, like that saturation patrol we did, we had like fifty citations or something, right, and then it'll bring it back down, and then in six months or so, it starts coming back up, and then we hammer it, it goes back down, so it comes in waves, it's just something we have to monitor.
Sure.
Um, with the way the road is designed now, though, we do have room for traffic trailers on Highway ninety-nine, um, that would monitor and gather data for us to see kind of what we're looking at, and it'd give us a twenty-four hour snapshot to see what, what the best times would be there is, and when the most flow is coming through, yeah. I'd be surprised if we didn't see speeds increase with the, I mean, yeah, it's like driving on glass. Super nice.
So nice.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
I just have, not necessarily, uh, for you, but the lights, so you were talking about out here, uh, when the fog was so bad the other morning, like, you just cannot see stop signs.
Nope.
So having a light is
Yeah.
High priority, I would think.
I agree. Yeah.
On that, yeah, on Highway ninety-nine, um, between six and seven o'clock in the morning, I got three vehicles doing between eighty and ninety miles an hour. All were cited for speeding, careless driving.
And it's amazing how many people don't have their headlights on.
Bit black visibility.
It's like a pet peeve of mine.
Wow.
That's a thing right there.
That would be around a two hundred sixty-five dollar citation. Yeah, over a hundred, you get your license. The, the careless driving is, uh, not what your insurance companies want to see.
Yeah.
But, yeah, gotta slow down, speed kills.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, guys.
Thanks.
Thank you.
You too.
So the next item on the agenda is citizen comments, side of this, we'd like to invest in citizens and anyone in the audience to address the council on any item left for third. Please limit your comments to about three minutes, please introduce yourself and state your address. Go on once. Anyone twice. Moving on. Moving on. Next, the reports to council. And we'll start with the city administrators' report.
All right, tree projects have been, uh, topic of conversation for several months, it feels like, that they are moving forward. Obviously the, the big trees are unglung and it looks crazy. It makes a really, really big difference. And so, you know, next in our mind is what does the plan moving forward look like? Obviously I think that the park would really benefit from some trees there, trees that won't destroy the path. Um, maybe not as dense, but as much as it's kind of nice how opened up it feels, they create a really nice buffer for the highway. So, um, you know, we're working on that and I actually got some recommendations for contacts. Uh, one person was actually Stacy recommended. And, um, it's in Arvist, it's really knowledgeable about trees, specifically in our region and the nurseries to source from. And so I have reached out and waiting to come back to them. I think it would be really helpful to certainly consult and, um, and go from there. Um, if we're gonna do more trees, I think that it's important that we do it with intention and we think about how we're gonna do good care for them with such a small team. Um, because our, our public works is two guys and they are stretched so, so thin. And so I would really, I would, you know, also we have all these new trees that we got on Highway eighty-nine. So really it's about making sure that we've planted trees that are right for our region, but we really understand the maintenance is gonna go into getting them launched to be established and, and good establishment usually actually takes like three years. Um, my limited knowledge of trees, to be fair, which is why I'm reaching out as a consultant. Um, and so that goes into the second point, which is researching irrigation options. We've had this twenty thousand sit aside for irrigation of my guy. To run actual irrigation full-time, irrigate that for those trees is going to easily, I think, go over twenty thousand dollars. And it's infrastructure that has lifetime maintenance. And we really only need it for those that week that we get every summer that's insanely hot and the first three years of life. So I think it would be better for us to convert that into thinking about contracting a tree care package or our street needs to burn getting over the two years, then it will be our responsibility during their establishment period and then any sort of park trees that we're thinking about being in over the next year or so. Um, it would offload that from our guys. We have a few trees that we planted last year that are suffering at the park because we're not tree experts. They're overextended. I, you know, I'm, I'm not saying that to put any blame or fault. It's just the reality of the work we have for our guys. So if we're gonna do more trees, let's move right. And I think that, you know, I know we wanted to be a tree city. So that's the route that I'm going and I'm doing some research on it. Um, the Great Elevator Project, you may have noticed the writing, right? So I, I got ahold of Harold, who is the owner, and, um, got another update. Obviously things are happening. It's coming down. So they have been working on what they can do with a man lift. But they have also contracted with a big demolition team that's gonna be the focus of bringing the crane and the tractor and all the things that we talked about our last council meeting. So they got diverted to some sort of emergency demolition project in the, or about a week behind. So that project timeline is being extended. However, the period for those big disruptions that we anticipated is still anticipated to be about the timeline that we expected. So what that means for the people that are most impacted right now by the work is that we implemented no parking on that street. And so that will probably extend that no parking timeline. So we will probably think about if it makes sense to tell them no parking between seven A M and six P M for work hours so they can get in front of their houses again during those evening hours. I think that would be reasonable at this point, given that most of the road is open. Uh, we sent them a letter documenting the county council and the sort of like terms and conditions for their demolition in town. Um, so that's documented. And they've been really great about talking to us. So the project goes on and it's looks crazy. There's a lot of stuff happening. Uh, ODOT project updates, we already told you. Uh, I left it short because I knew Andrea was coming. And then, uh, this is the big one, well updates. So this is also a new, a new business item. Um, so our public works team met on site in September with GSI, who are like our hydrologists. folks that are the ones who sort of like identified the source for a well and submit our big lengthy applications to the Oregon Health Authority for another point source for a well, all of that stuff. They handle those things. Uh, civil west, obviously are engineers on the project and they looked to see if they could propose another well site and they looked at trying to get it closer to the existing well sixty-nine to cut costs. So what started out as a well that was triple the budget has been reduced to double the budget based on those changes. Um, so the position that we're in is that we are going to, the scope of the project has sort of changed so greatly that we will likely move out to bed is well advised that we should, um, and break out the drill portion from the tiny portion. Uh, we might be able to see some more savings by doing that and maybe get us two thirds.
Yeah.
To the budget rather than, you know, double. Um, but the things that are coming are that I have meetings lined up this week with our funding agency through the state that has allocated the grant dollars that we've received. Um, for this project, uh, just to ensure that whatever decisions we make, that we are not jeopardizing that money. So I have a meeting with them on Friday. And I have meetings with the governor's office lined up tomorrow as well as Senator Murphy's office. And so we are going to start the process of finding out how much free or potentially not free money is on the table for us to finish our wall project. Um, I wish I had more updates. Of course, all those meetings are scheduled to begin tomorrow. Uh, so those updates will be coming, um, as of this week. Yeah. So, and then the other thing is that because some of these things are timeline sensitive for the grant, especially the grant money has deadlines, right? Like we have to spend the state money by June. And so we don't want to be in, in a position where we're, you know, extending past a deadline and losing the money that way. Um, we don't want to ever see grant money walk. And so, uh, I have had a conversation with civil west that as soon as we make a decision that I need that to be the top priority. They have agreed to that. So
Good.
Hold them to that. Uh, everybody was aware of the kind of type of issues. A better topic, better and enjoyable one. Welcome Jess. So we have a new librarian and I wanted to invite all of you to welcoming Jenna with me. And Jenna's actually not new to Halsey, as many of you probably know. Um, we did have some counselors who were able to review applicant materials. So now you can put a face to a name. But Jenna's also a very long time volunteer with the City of Halsey Library. I'm gonna say nine years? Eight, nine years. So she's been around for a long time. And, um, we're excited to welcome her to being the full-time librarian, part-time librarian. And, uh, you know, just using her existing library knowledge and all of our community and seeing how she can continue to grow our library.
Welcome.
Welcome.
And lastly, we have upcoming events, annual backroom testing. You probably saw it on your article. So that's this time of year. Um, always do a session service is doing their last summer canning series. It is the tenth Thursday. And they're doing gourmet sauces and registration info is available on our city website. Citywide cleanup day is the Saturday. And, uh, October thirtieth is the deadline for the Halsey pumpkin carving contest submissions on ours. Can that's it for me? Any questions on any of this?
Yeah, the well updates, there's a really big word here I've never seen before, operationalizing.
Oh, okay. So touching the wall in the ground makes a well, but tying it all to our
Making it operational, is that what you're saying? Okay.
So whatever, that's the piece that we, that's the bridge that we're trying to get is that we have lucky.
Yeah.
Rest of it, that's what we're gonna keep on. And that's the part that is shocking. It has surprised everybody.
Oh, it's shocking. Yeah.
Yes, it has surprised engineers and, and in conversations with the governor's office and with our state funding agency for the portion that we got granted. I've said, I've talked to other municipalities and they're all running into this. And when I talk to those offices, they're saying, we've heard the same. So this isn't news to them. I don't know what that means for us.
And elsewhere?
Other, other communities are running into where they think they are prepared to go to bed. They are saving money. They are budgeting. They are getting the, we worked the engineering and everything that we've already worked on and that's supposed to inform our estimates.
Yeah.
And our apps, like when we went to the state, we were giving you three hundred thousand dollars. That was not, it was for mass. That was something that Hillary researched.
Yeah.
And got expert opinions on. And then you go to bed and it's lump, you know, just significantly more, not a little more, uncomfortably more. And that has been the case that I've heard from other municipalities as well, around construction projects. And to say that, when I was reaching out to these, you know, these other agencies in the state, they agreed that that is, that they agreed that's what they're carrying.
It was shocking. I mean.
Help us get to the other line if we point out that we've been working on this for over ten years, not ten years, excuse me, two years. I mean, we have been trying, it's like ten years to get something done.
We have, yeah.
You know, through no fault of ours, costs are going up and, and things are not progressing.
So, uh, we'll see tomorrow when I have those meetings, if it helps at all.
Yeah.
To say that, um, so I will know more. I think about dates and meetings.
I was like, can you email us and then?
Yeah, yes, definitely. Um, I know that I said I would keep people that as it progressed, but there was like no new news, right? It was just like, oh, we still have money. So now we're having, we're having the heavy meetings and hoping to. I'm social.
Thank you for working on that. Yeah.
Any other things?
Thank you.
All right. Don't let her ask me.
Last time we talked about that one. So the next item is public works report with Andy.
Yeah, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Perfect. Here's some highlights that we had for the September report. We repaired a water service leak on Comerut Street. Um, the tree service that we hired has started in the park as, uh, Brianna mentioned. Uh, we've been involved with that with, uh, hauling, uh, the large portions of the wood out. They chipped out all of the other small stuff. And we actually were involved with hauling that away. But, uh, as today, they finished grinding everything. Now we have leftovers just doing some cleanup there and hauling that out to our, uh, facility at the lagoon. Uh, we were in, involved with installing place structure. The, the company put the main structure up and, but, uh, one of the things we did was, uh, would, uh, install the other place structure and spread the remaining chips that were, um, for that project. And I know I kinda, I, I made a big, um, kind of a long story short, but, um, our well sixty-nine, sorry, well ninety-eight. Um, there are some things that Billy's seen that were changing. Um, and we noticed, uh, we noticed that we had, long story short, uh, it was time to change that pump out. So, um, the issues that we had, we resolved. A new pump has been installed. And everything is working, uh, as, as it should.
Awesome.
And I, that's all I have. If anybody wants to ask any questions about anything, I'd be glad to answer.
Anybody? That's it.
Thank you.
Wanted to make a little note. Um, Andy was scheduled for a fantastic vacation that of course he should go on to celebrate his anniversary, right when we started to do the research. They've noticed the issue with the pump and then they were starting to do the research. And so Andy set Billy up to take over the research on that project when he was getting ready to go. And so I just also wanted to give Billy a little shout out because it was one of the first times that he really had to do, take on getting bids and stuff for a big product like that. Um, and we had work scheduled before Andy was back. I mean, we weren't first on the list, but I think that, uh, I would just like to know that Andy took, or Billy took on that new task.
That's awesome.
Awesome. Good job.
Andy obviously did a good job, but this was a, this was a new, it's not so.
Well noted.
Yeah, it's a big deal.
Thank you much.
Thank you.
And the next item on the agenda is the library report. Must not can be Abby. Good job.
Yeah, we started the last week or so, it's really, I don't know too much that was needed.
Okay.
But, um, I did a lot of training and I have an idea for an event for this month, actually. Because I realized there's a lot of religious families in Halsey.
Right.
And so I'm thinking instead of Halloween, we should celebrate facing your fears. You still dress up, you still do trick or treat, but it's not for Halloween. It's dressing up to face what you're afraid of. And I have an event at the library that I'm planning the last three days of Halloween, because that's the last week for the library. People come in if they're dressed up, both kids and adults. They get like another piece of candy instead of just one. And if they don't, they're going to be tricked instead. And Brianna gave me the brilliant idea of using the boxes instead of little bags, but they actually have to put their hand in the box. So I'm gonna make it, I'm trying to, gonna make it creepy. Like Spider of the Lips or something. And they pull out like a little plastic spider or snake and that's their trick.
Oh.
And, um, if they tell me, oh, but I like spiders. I like snakes. I can tell them, well, I guess I'm the one being tricked. And that's the idea of, of the event this month. I'm trying to do like little events every month. But encourage more people to come in.
Sure.
But for now, I'm just focusing on that one.
Okay, sounds great.
So for that's all I got.
Good deal.
Perfect.
Big job.
Any questions?
Yeah, so I want to congratulate you. I, I don't know if this is a council of the world. How much you paid your dues.
Yeah.
I think, I think you're like one of the first volunteers we have when we reopen the library.
Yes.
So, y- yeah, you've you paid your dues.
You've seen a few librarians.
Thank you.
Okay, so next item is mayor's report. Been quite a busy month. Um, met with representatives of the Oregon Emergency Management Division, specifically regarding this planning, uh, effect. They're doing a lot of studies on the Cascadia Subduction Zone, earthquake, et cetera. Um, but what they're focusing on, these, this team's focused on the downstream effects on small communities. Um, and potential issues. So like where we're at, we're surrounded by bridges. There's a high potential bridges failing and what that looks like. So they're just starting to look at that, uh, hopefully in the next ninety days, they'll have more information for the next meeting. Still doing a lot of work with Central End Bond Committee. Um, the board president and I presented to the Brownsville Council uh, what the bond committee's doing, what it entails, what the cost is gonna look like. It wasn't a financial ask. It was just to get the word out. Um, and then after our presentation to council, we had a sidebar meeting in another room with a lot of community members asking questions for about an hour and a half. It was interesting. Um, had a meeting with, uh, Oregon Department of Energy Division. There's a hundred and thirteen million dollar federal award for uh, home energy rebates, uh, that Oregon, Argonians are eligible for. Uh, they're trying to chip off some of it for more rural communities. And so part of that, of course, pushing on that and had a meeting with the, uh, DLCD about a proposed amendment to the Oregon Advised Statute for Chapter six sixty, Division eight for Housing Needs Analysis Program and Rural Empresses Push for Housing. They're just starting to look at that more seriously. Uh, the governor put a Um, they're just starting to look at that more seriously. Uh, the government put a, a, ask more of a, they'll shout, look at housing, uh, needs for across the state. And some hard questions were asked, what, what, how about houses that are standing unoccupied? Tennes we use. So we'll get things like that. Um, and also the community green infrastructure grants, which we should be getting some information on fairly soon. Uh, to help with offsetting, well, the goal is to help to offset the weapons issue. So we can have some, basically weapons bank to give us more ability to do stuff in our communities. And then tomorrow, um, Brianna and I have a meeting with Representative Murkis staff. And then I will be at the governor's staff meeting also, so. Um, and then USCPA is just going to be launching information on a water infrastructure. It's like a hundred and seventeen billion dollars, something like that across the nation. For communities and helping fix water infrastructure, which oddly, we have need. So while we chat with Representative Murkis about that as well. But that's been a busy one.
Yeah.
And next is, uh.
That's a question.
Yes.
Um. That was a question, I'm just. I'm a little befuddled about this whole earthquake thing. I mean, they've been talking about this very seriously for.
Oh, yeah.
Many years and that's all I hear is talk. Is anything actually being done? Do they actually have a plan?
There, that's what they're trying to do is create a plan. And I have found since I've been involved with this, actually. A lot more work than I expected it to be. It's totally different. Portions of communities and sizes of communities and how they route emergency services. How they access emergency services. But the big one is, where do you put helicopters?
In the air.
Well, you gotta land somewhere. And where's that gonna be? And then the question that was brought up is, once you land in those helicopters in emergency, how do you prevent them from being swarmed? What's one that people swarming the helicopters to get whatever they perceive to be on?
Oh, I see, I see.
And that's actually a, a significant concern in the more urban areas. That, that's actually a significant concern for them. So there's horrors being made, I mean, not leaps and bounds, but. Chipping away at it, like how do you eat an elephant, you know, bite at a time?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, nobody knows if and or when this will happen. But at least they're trying to be a little more organized for some sort of event. Something's better than nothing, I suppose.
The bridge in Corvallis is part of that.
It is.
The bridge being rebuilt.
Right.
That's some action.
Yeah. Yeah, it's, uh, they haven't tried to get that bridge done for many, many years and it finally say, hey, it will fail.
Yeah.
I was not aware that that bridge actually spun.
Oh.
Yeah.
Well, it hasn't for years, so.
No, it hasn't for years, but it is designed to spin.
For cargo?
For cargo, yeah.
There's pictures of it in one of the museums in Corvallis. Oh, that's cool idea.
It's the things like that, that with us being surrounded by bridges. What's that look like if one or more fail? How do we get help to and from? So. This wins. Let's call Mitch. He has a flatbed.
Oh, yeah, that was me on the road there. They showed him the pictures mad because all the ball bouts, can't get my car lowered down.
You should be able to have better now.
I just got, you just gotta remember which streets to go down.
Yeah, right.
It's all it is.
Yeah. So that's it.
Which I will never remember.
So next is the Central Land School District Report.
Does not have a very busy month. Um, their meeting is actually next week, so I don't have any updates from the meeting. Um, I do know that this is homecoming week and they have, um, last year was the first one that they did, but the, um, homecoming community kickoff from five thirty to six thirty, they're doing free hot dog dinner. And there'll be games, carnival games and stuff too. So, and they would love for community members to come, so.
Assuming that's Friday.
Friday, yes. Five thirty, high school. Yep. So that's really, I know that they're getting close to finishing up the outside of the CTE building. Um, and there's slowly work being done on the inside too, so. That's pretty much all I have right now.
So next item is new business. And the first item on new business is the well funding. You have a one second. Let's fold forth.
So this is new business because we need to reach consensus. Um, a lot of this information, you all know, the well failed in twenty twenty-two. We've been working on it. Everything's over budget. We're looking at trying to close currently, we're, we're estimating about four hundred thousand dollars more than they need to finish the project. Um, any funding identified and if research that I do would have to then come to council and be approved, be a resolution. Whether that be grants or loans. But what I need council to consider is, um, if they approve me to explore all options. And so what that looks like is obviously we look for loan, for grants. We want free money. However, in the process of seeing if we're even eligible for those buckets of money, I would need to actually, apply for loans potentially. And so I can't do that unless council gives me the go ahead. So that is the item that is before you. And again, we accept no money.
Right.
Can I volunteer for the emergency meeting if we have to beat the rush and take a vote on whether or not we'll accept the money? I mean, she said there's a lot of our communities wanting the same money.
Yeah.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
We've been working on this for a couple of years. If they know there's money out there, it's gonna be a rush for who gets there first.
I, I have no problem with that. So possible options are recommending council select any one of the next three. Approved the request to investigate potential wealth funding, including grants and loans. Or deny the request to investigate potential wealth funding. Or provide further direction to staff. The way I see it, there's only, only one.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, but you guys get to make that vote.
Explore every option. As far as loans go, is there like, like where, on, you know, on a personal level, you can, uh, apply for too many and get a negative connotation? Is there anything like that that we need to worry about?
No, it's not the same for cities, like in credit, for, for it. No, it's not the same, um. We would essentially submit like letters of interest to certain funding agencies. Um, obviously we have to go the route of loans, which is like, we don't wanna do loans. I would also, you know, have to consider whether or not anything that's, if we do land on something, whether it's offered any kind of loans. Um, we would have to consider if our current rates could support our needs.
Right.
So if all of those things will have to come into consideration, but we kinda have to look at what's even available to us. Because those loans can even be competitive, because they're usually through the government agencies that have like state revolving funds, et cetera. And so, um, there's no guarantee that we will even be eligible for loans. Based off of the competitiveness of those things.
Right. So just need consensus. Are you all in agreement to approve the request?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Perfect.
Thank you.
So now next, it's the bipartisan infrastructure law funding that is out there. There is a lot of, uh, different little caveats for the buckets of funding. And it typically, if you search hard enough, you can find one that you're, is really kind of, you know, in your wheelhouse. And like you'll know it when you see it. And if you apply for that, you have a much better shot at getting it and just kinda shotgunning. Information out there. I'll look into a little bit more too.
Okay, yeah, I'll take any tips and tricks, but I also dotted that down so that I can look into it more. And then that EPA thing is something we're gonna explore because it is directly water structure. And so one thought that we have is. If we say bring back the components of upgrading our controls and saying like, can we put solar panels on the roof? Then maybe we could ask for the whole remaining component. Like, hey, we qualify because we want solar panels on the shop roof.
Right.
And we're becoming more efficient with new controls. Can you pipe us in? So we'll look at all of them, right? Especially when, when you have things that where they're trying to push green infrastructure. Maybe we want green infrastructure.
Be kind of nice. So the next item on the agenda is the ever popular public camping ordinance.
So this topic came forward just as a suggestion that maybe council might want to consider reviewing it for a couple of reasons. Primarily, um, there was some concerns about the way that our RV on public or private property is written. And after talking to some other communities, I'm doing like a very initial search. As you can see, it's like a very summary of a few like, like communities kind of in our region. The way that we currently have our camping, RV residency on private property is that we allow it to three RVs. Which is more than neighboring communities and we don't put any sort of parameters on it, like for one year, for six months. And so do we wanna look at those things is sort of the question on the table. But while if we do choose to review this policy, the others I came to know. Is that there was a Supreme Court case, Grants Pass versus, yeah, I wish I didn't pass it, I don't remember. Um, and it's, the decision was that the Supreme Court sided with Grants Pass in regarding their loss on public camping. And so I have the conference next week and one of the, one of the, um, topics, like a big workshop session is gonna be about the implications of that court finding. And what it means for cities and the laws that we've implemented. I know a lot of thought went into, creating this ordinance in the first place to be responsive to state law. So I guess the first question on the table is, um, is council interested in taking this back to the table? And if so, we don't have to decide today. I think that it's, if we go back to the table. Are we interested in focusing solely on like that highlighted section that's about, um, the topic, you know, the, the issues around, living in our meats on private property, um, that has been sort of brought to complaint? Or do we have to look at all of it again?
Is there a specific issue?
In the community? No, I, I think that it's just that once somebody leaves. Like you have people who have read the ordinance when they've noticed like one, which is in compliance. And then shocked to find that they could stack more in. Right? If somebody wanted to, they could have a mini RV park in their backyard. You know, it's depending on lots, like there's no sort of.
I know.
Parameters around lot size to, to those things that you are gonna have three. I guess there's just ways that it could be looked at differently. And then, um, in recent city manager meetings that I've gone to, I've, um, heard from other managers that a lot of people are putting like, some people are putting like, one month, which is really tight.
Um, well, when we were, so when we were going over this, I think it was July of last year.
Right.
It was because we were rushing to get in, uh, before that case.
Right.
Right. Um, and there was several things that we looked at, you know, you never know. There's also a housing shortage and we also have people in town that own horse trailers that would qualify.
Right.
As RVs and campers. And so, you know, there are multiple things that, that could be considered RVs. And so if you had a horse trailer and a camper, you know, that's already two. And if people are, if they're parked there, it doesn't necessarily me, mean that people are living in them. But if you have, um, you know, relatives visiting those kind of things, or if somebody gets kicked out of their house. Uh, there's just a lot of reasons that people need to live in RVs. Um, and I, I do think we put a lot of thought into it. Um, so if there's specific issues, yeah, I mean, I think we would all be willing to readdress it, but. Um, maybe you'll find out more at your, at your meeting.
Yeah.
That you're going to.
Maybe one of the options is to table it and talk about it again next month, after I were born. Um, I don't feel strongly one way or the other. I will say that our RV camping on private property is more lenient than other like communities.
Right.
But I agree there's possible shortage. Um, so.
We spent a lot of time specifically on just that part of the ordinance, because there were so many people that were worried about potentially tents coming on the public areas, because that was part of the new thing. And this was kind of the happy medium that they had of people could have family members stay in there instead of having it be how it was. So, yeah, if you learn more at the meeting, I think it'd be, in my opinion, better to at least wait until next month and then possibly talk about it again, since this was, that was like a four hour work session.
Yeah.
That we did, so.
Yeah.
And on.
And not that long ago.
Right. And the other thing that I would suggest, um, I think, uh, Councilor Lacost also had some concerns about, um, how the process went. Because we all kinda went back and kind of did our own thing, submitted it to the administrator. And, uh, she took it back and kind of did everything without, I never got to see, you know, what the other counselors.
Sure.
Suggestions were. And so I don't know what was kept and what was.
Right.
Done away with. So I, I do, what we tried to do was find a way to set up something where we could all see kind of working document. And we decided that that, for various reasons, wouldn't work. But, um, I don't know, maybe if we, it might require multiple work sessions if, if we did that, you know, just to kinda get an idea, do the work and then relook at what we, the changes that we wanted to make and why, and discuss that more. I don't know.
I think LOC had a template that they were working up. Do you recall saying anything about that?
No, I don't have anything on the template. Um, but I haven't dug into it, so.
So I know that they were, they were really waiting to find out what shook out with Grant's past case. And they were looking at doing it best practices template. I don't know if they ever launched that or not.
No. And I will say that I do not see issue in our community with people moving in and camping on the streets, just in terms of like sleeping on sidewalks. I'm not saying we never see people, but they always move on. We do not have an issue with people sort of setting up shop and I, um. I think in my time here, I've had two or three instances where I talked to somebody and that was just because they were in the park. And we have very specific rules about it. And I've not ever had to, I've not had to tell sheriffs. I've just been like, hey, people are gonna come use the picnic chairs. You don't have to pack it up if people are understanding and they're not about everything else, you know?
Yeah.
So.
I think the part of that is because we don't have public transit. That comes and goes through here. I think that's actually in our favor. Um, but recently I've seen people sleeping in the ditches along the side of a highway in between. Like here in tangent, uh, south of town too.
Yeah.
And they, they don't, they don't congregate here or happen in. Right.
Yeah, there is, that's it.
Right, exactly, yeah.
So.
So consensus is to table it and get more information?
Yeah, yeah.
I would like to see, I think one of the problems we have, I think what you kind of addressed is that we need to be, um, clear definition of what an RV vehicle is in light of this. Because oddly enough, I have heard of people living in horse trailers.
Yeah.
So, but that's not necessarily fair to a person who owns an or, horse trailer, but, you know, that puts you over your quota because you have a boat and an RV. Um, I think we'd help a lot if we just be a little more specific about what we consider RV in light of potential housing. The other concern I have is that if we get too liberal with, uh, vehicles that can be occupied by people long term. It's gonna put a serious load on our infrastructure with, because I can't believe for one minute, people are just gonna put all that work in to put it in there nice and level and then they're gonna go out once a week and dump the gray water. It's, they're either gonna dump it on the ground, which is highly unlikely, or they're just gonna put it into the. The system of the host family that they're living with, and that's, and then it becomes a problem for us. Those, those kinds of things is one of the things I'm concerned with. The other thing is if, if there's a major problem, it needs to be dealt with right away. We don't have our own police force, I mean, we're not all here Corvallis, we can't just call the cops. We have Sheriff's Department that has covered a pretty wide area. And uh, it, it's just those kinds of issues I think that we need to look at.
Were you on when we went through, when we did the work sessions for these?
Yeah, a lot of that stuff is in here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, one of the things that came up to me is one of my neighbors has a, a trailer that. And it's a nice trailer, did a nice job setting it up, but did it. Well outside the boundaries of legal offset, and then it's like. You could whisper and then people next door could hear it when they're living in, it's that close to the property line. And that's, that's not grocery. If people are gonna do that, they need to be considered their neighbors.
Then we'll table it and wait to get other more information.
May I say something before we adjourn? Um, Brianna sent out this email to, about the elected officials' training opportunities. I highly, I, I'm gonna plan on going, I've done this for what, six years now, and I still would, and plan on, on going. So if anybody's interested, we could carpool, but I highly, highly recommend going. It's in our emails, it's um League of Oregon Cities puts it on, it's the elected decision, elective essentials training. Uh, November thirteenth, eight fifteen to five, so it is a commitment, but it's, it's. Yeah, I took it when I over in Monroe once and it was very, very beneficial.
And it's free.
Yeah.
Right.
So it's a really good training opportunity.
It is very informative, very good, so I'm just throwing that out there, that putting it in everybody's mind.
Are they still doing Zoom or like reviews about it all?
I think they do have online as well.
Yeah, they do have some on their website, I believe.
Yeah, it's just like baby and kids, or zero way, I could go for like a whole day.
Right, yeah, that is, it is a long commitment, but especially on a Wednesday too. But if anybody's able to and wants to, I'm gonna plan on going, so we can go together. Anyways.
Know that, there's no old business. No ordinances or resolutions, amazingly. And with that, we're going to adjourn at. Eight fifteen.